I almost hit leave meeting. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I will call this meeting to order. It's the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session on October 10th, 2021. I will call this meeting to order. Do I already do that? I already did that once. I'll do it twice, just in case. Pledge of Allegiance on Monday. Roll call, please.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Director Duncan.
Now I'm here.
Thank you. Vice President Martin.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkney, rules of procedure.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting, and the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Do we have anybody for public input?
Yes, ma'am. We've got Pamela Edinson.
Hi Pamela. You're on.
Hello.
Hi.
I want to say a quick thank you to Marion and any other staff who have been helping me to get the website to work better, to be able to work the agendas. And we're still working on getting the packets a little better, and I'm hoping that we'll also get this customer portal and I can beta test it too here very soon. So again, just thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's all very short but sweet. Again, thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments and thank you for your help also. Anybody else? Dory?
We just had someone join us late. Eric Weck, are you here to make public comment or just observing today? Eric Weck?
Oh, yes, I'm just observing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, Madam President, nobody else for public comment?
Okay, thank you. Item number six, COVID-19 update. General Manager.
Well, okay, I, oh, excuse me. There, can you hear me? Not much, but I need to start out by basically telling you that the trend has turned a little bit. The COVID numbers are actually going up. It's that way against around the state, but it's that way across the nation, and I think it's winter's hitting. It hasn't left us yet. I think there is still the hope that this thing will be over by 2022, and let's hope that that's the case. We are still, our mask mandate is still in place and encouraged. Oceans requirements are still in place till the end of the year, but I do believe at the end of the year you will see a termination of a lot of the COVID-related things. Well, I think some of the rules will, will, will terminate, especially hopefully with regard to the shut-off mandate. But it's difficult to say. I, I think the scientists did expect that there would be a spike. And we're seeing, and I know that Eisenhower is seeing more COVID cases. They grew over the weekend. We were in LA over the weekend, and every place we went required vaccine cards and masks. And we were right downtown. Now, we did go through Skid Row, and they were not wearing masks, and we're it, it's, I think it's, I think we're still on track for this to be over with some time.
I had one, one, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just crossing my fingers. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I read several different articles from several different sources, and they were talking about while the COVID has slightly come up, deaths are down from the, from the virus, so.
I think I remember that.
It must.
That's a very good.
The cases are supposedly milder and not as deadly as they were when it was first came on the scene. Anyway, that's all.
The part of the issue here in the valleys, of course, we've got the demographic migration into the valley this time of year. That increases the, of course, load on, on the healthcare systems. So you have a natural increase in patients in the emergency room, in the ICU, et cetera, so. So we want, so, but we do want to be as vigilant as we can to get on top of the COVID, because all that does is add to the already existing trend of, okay? Otherwise, I, I think it's still good news. All right.
Okay, good. Thank you. Always use good news. Okay, Human Resources report, actually, that's the anniversaries, the questions, the new hirees. We'll do that on Monday, but do you have anything you want to say today, Art?
Well, other than, you can see that we have quite a few anniversaries. This must be the year, this must be the month of our hiring.
Yeah, look at that.
And we will, we also want to add Danny to that list on Monday, because we didn't have the chance to, you know, speak to him last time. And he was gone, and we'll, we'll get a chance to add him to this.
Okay, we'll do that Monday. Thank you. Item number eight, Resolution 2021 S-17.
That will happen on Monday.
This one's Monday. This is the, no, this is the executive order for the Brown. But you will, we'll vote on it.
Yeah, and this is really just kind of a housekeeping item at this point. You've already acted upon it, and so this is something you're going to have to do over 30 days.
Right, okay. We'll vote on that on Monday.
You're still under the last authorization.
For this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Number nine, Personnel Services with the TKE Engineering for Construction Management Inspection of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility. Turn it over to General Manager.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm excited, you know, to, to get this project going. We, we really do need to get this plant from the reports that we'll get into later on, flows to the plant are at near capacity of our plant. This project is to manage the construction of this. And I, I think Brian's, I don't think, Brian is going to elaborate on the details of how we went about the selection process here. There were three submittals, but the thing I want you to remember that all three submittals were actually teams of consultants, anywhere from three to five consultants. So when you're looking at the name, you don't want to assume that it's just that name. These are people that contract with other people to put these projects together. Each, each one of them, all, we had three submittals, all three could do the work. And, and, but we did go through the process, and we selected one Brian, I'll let you take it from there.
Fantastic. Thank you, General Manager. The item you have in front of you is to award the contract for the Construction Management Inspection and Related Services of the Regional Water Reclamation Facility Project. It's to authorize the General Manager to award a contract for Construction Management Inspection and Related Services to TKE in the amount of $3,671,000. In summary, the Construction Management Inspection Related Services for the plant is a vital component of expanding the district's wastewater treatment capacity. The project includes three components. It is the wastewater facility itself, a conveyance line or regional conveyance line, which is a trunk sewer that will connect existing sewer areas to the plant. And then also, the third portion of it will be a collection system, also removing some septic tanks, tying them into the construction system, and will then be conveyed through the conveyance line to the plant, which is in the area of M2 collection system. Related services include, but not limited to, administering the clean water, SRF, and grant compliance, permit coordination, environmental compliance monitoring, construction staking, and labor compliance. As the General Manager referenced, this was a request for qualifications process, which means we wanted to get the best firm. Once we established the best firm, and again, as the General Manager said, there were three very highly ranked teams. We would then started negotiating with the highest-ranked team. In this case, it was TK Engineering who did have several subs that I was familiar with, as well as other staff members. It felt very comfortable that TK and the team could handle the job of this size. With that said, I'll answer any questions.
Did you say that septic tanks on people's property was involved?
Yes, yes.
These guys are, oh, this is my, okay.
Yeah, this is.
He's going to oversee that too.
Yes, this is three phases, and yes, the third component of that is a collection system in the area M2.
Okay.
We do have someone here from TK. We have Steve here.
I believe Lucas is here.
And Steve is coming?
He's having trouble connecting. He keeps coming in and out of the meeting.
See if we have any questions. Vice President Martin, any questions?
No questions.
Director Grasha?
Yeah, I, the amount that was approved last meeting, is this in addition to that? So we went from 50 million, now we're at 53 million? Tell me how that works.
No, Director, that's a great question. When we approved this, the construction of the project, we increased the total project amount in our budget to 51 million. That did include the construction management portion. And for reference, this $3.7 million is spread across those three. Obviously, the a larger component of that is goes to the wastewater treatment facility effort, but not the entire 3.7. So what this is, is this is actually the construction managed for all three. You haven't seen the construction contract. It's not been bid yet for the conveyance line or the M2 line. When those are brought to you, those will only be construction projects. We will not be bringing to you another construction management contract for those two construction projects. But it was included in the appropriation for $51 million. I believe, depending on the construction, the bidding prices that we receive on those two projects, based on the transient inflation we keep hearing, we may have to bring a budget augmentation for the conveyance line and the, and the trunk sewer, or excuse me, the collection system. If we do, again, that will include the CNN that you're approving today.
We're, we're hoping that this inflation hasn't touched the materials that we will be using for this, these two projects, including Mr. Piper. And when you look at this from the, the, the typical estimate is an amount of 10% of what the project costs, and we, they're well within the budget.
Mr. Wallam, it's very hard to hear you. Please use your mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, we got it there. This is itself. If you have any more questions.
I have one more on.
Right ahead.
Um, the on the conveyance line, how, how close are you to being able to get that moving so that these might someday come together all at the same time? So if you know what I mean. When, when this is completed, what are the odds we're going to be having a, a line in place to feed it?
The plan has, has been that after we, the award of the, excuse me, the wastewater treatment facility, the plant has the longest lead time, and therefore, we were going to bid the collection system as well as the conveyance line several months after the award of contract. So we are still on schedule roughly six months after the award of the facility, which was last month. We intend on bringing the conveyance line, and then after that, the M2. Basically, we just didn't want to bid all the projects at one time. We staggered them as, based on need and where we thought the schedule of the treatment plant would be. So you will be seeing those very shortly, for the next four months.
And all, all things are, go on the economics side of this project, as far as you know?
Yes, we're still working with the state to solidify the funding agreement, but yes, we are, we are in good financial shape. The, notwithstanding what happens with the funding agreement, whether it's a high percentage of grant, or if it's a high percentage of SRF money, or excuse me, state revolving fund.
But for the record, we are pretty much guaranteed the 16 million, and, and with the start date of October 30th.
October 1st is when the funding agreement is actually.
Funding agreement. I can't, yeah, okay.
Even though we haven't signed the agreement, when the state decides to award the agreement as they have stated, they, they set the start date where we can build back to, if you will, or get compensated for, and that was October 1, 2021.
So we're, yes, to answer your question, we're pretty solid with the financing. It may even get better. And we assume that it will get better, but we can't say at this point. We're still negotiating that with the state.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Sewell? Director Duncan?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we'll move on to number 10, which, did you, it's pulled from today's agenda, correct?
Yes, right.
It's not ready, and, but it'll come back to us.
Yeah, the plan was to put it on the agenda with hopes that we would be able to get a document negotiated and ready for the Board to consider at its Monday meeting.
You still hoping for that?
We're.
Okay, then we, I won't pull it yet. We'll see how it goes Monday.
On the agenda for, for Monday.
Okay, okay. So if it's, if it's done on Monday, we'll do it Monday. If not, we will wait until you guys are done, and then vote on it. Okay, number 11, which is a cost-share agreement for the United States Geological Survey Land Subsidence Study in the Mission Creek Sub Basin. All right.
Is Steve here?
Did he make it in?
He is here, and he is connected.
Okay, Steve, I'm, um, this is, basically, while Steve's getting prepared here, this really is part of the settlement agreement, and where we've always agreed that any of the, any of the work that we do for the management of the basin, we split it a third, and a third, and a third. This is all, and it, so it's in line with what we agreed to. We just received, you know, the, the, you know, you, we just received this cost proposal from CVWD, which is why you haven't seen it before this time. We didn't know exactly what CVWD wanted us, and you do have that now, and that's why we're bringing it to you. DWA actually did discuss this a little earlier, but they did not also have this agreement. We all three received it at the same time. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Steve, you want to take that from there?
Yes, thank you, General Manager. Good afternoon, Madam President and Directors. My apologies if I missed a few of the details. I'm having trouble bringing up my files and being connected in this meeting right now. So I'll, I'll go off memory. CVWD has worked with USGS to complete land subsidence studies throughout the Coachella Valley, mainly in the Indio Sub Basin since the 1970s. And what they found over the years is that the efforts to recharge water have not just subsided or slowed, excuse me, the rate of land subsidence in the Indio Sub Basin, primarily areas down closer to the Salt and Sea. They've actually seen a little bit of elasticity or rebound in that area. With the advent of Sigma in 2015 and requirements to further track land subsidence, we're expanding those efforts by the USGS to include the Mission Creek Sub Basin. So what USGS did back in, excuse me, I'm sorry, was there a question?
I don't think so. Not on this end.
Sorry, I'll keep going. So what USGS did is they put a proposal together to not just continue their efforts in the Indio Sub Basin from now, oh, excuse me, over the next four years, they're going to expand those efforts into the Mission Creek Sub Basin. So these are all separate line items, as shown in the cost-share agreement that's attached to your agenda packet. And what they're going to do is first look at land subsidence and put together a land subsidence mitigation plan if needed. If they find that land subsidence is occurring in Mission Creek Sub Basin, part of the plan will be to actually look at and install monitoring stations where they can further evaluate land subsidence. So it's kind of a multi-step approach to evaluating land subsidence in the Mission Creek Sub Basin. So what's in front of you now, Mission Springs, one-third share of the Mission Creek portion is around, I think, 67,000 off the top of my head. Again, it should be in the agenda packet. But we wanted to let you know that that could be, that number could be much less if they don't find land subsidence is occurring, and they don't need to install monitoring stations, or it would be that full amount if they do find land subsidence and need to install monitoring stations. And just in closing, this is a multi-year effort. It's primarily handled 100% by USGS. It's, they take a very scientific approach, a hands-off approach. Hey, help us fund this, and then we'll, we'll get the work done over the next couple of years. The agencies, including Mission Springs, DWA, and CVWD, will all have the opportunity to comment on the land subsidence report and any findings that USGS finds as we go forward.
That's all. Thank you, Steve. I've got a question. I, part of it, I was reading, and, and it said something about having CVWD working with with USGS on parts of the Mission Creek Basin. Any, anything that's like that in there, is Mission Springs Water District going to be, you know, included? Where, if it's the, the basin, the Mission Creek Basin?
Yes, Madam President, USGS is contracted directly with CVWD, and then we're just being a part of the cost share since it's specific to Mission Creek. But again, you, I just, that's what I was trying to clarify, is USGS takes a very hands-off approach. They conduct everything from a scientific standpoint, and the agencies are only brought in at certain points to review the information that USGS has come up with.
I might also add that the settlement agreement specifies that CVWD, in all these, when we do something like this, is, or will be, I think maybe we could vote not to do it, but they will typically be the person that, that has the administrative contract with the consultant.
Okay, so, and, and the map that's in the, in the packet here? The black part, is that the part we're talking about in the Mission Creek Basin that has the, may have the subsidence issues that they predict?
Yes.
It's called the part, partly consolidated portion of the Mission Creek Basin?
Yes.
Okay, so CVWD must be more concerned with the bottom. It says they're concerned about the subsidence on the bottom part there. And there's a little bit up top, probably. It looks more like it's like up there where Whitewater Hill is, maybe, somewhere up in that area. I remember Dr. Berman saying whenever he drove down Interstate 10, he went past Whitewater Hill, he would do this. Because if you ever had any kind of earthquake or something, he said, those things are coming down, liquefaction. Anyway, he was a great guy. Anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that's what that black was, because I didn't see a legend.
Yeah, Madam President, again, they've been looking at, or USGS has been looking at with CVWD land subsidence throughout the Indio Sub Basin, so now they're kind of expanding that into Mission Creek.
Right.
And we don't have some of the consolidated layers, the clay layers that they have down closer to the Salt and Sea that are more prone to collapsing in a land, or in a, a drought condition or overdraft condition of the groundwater basin. But again, as part of Sigma, we're required to track a little bit more detailed land subsidence, so this is the first step going down that avenue. Let's see what is happening in Mission Creek and see to what extent we need to continue to monitor what's going on in Mission Creek now.
Great, good idea.
I, I think partially too. They're, they're not doing the Indios or the Desert Hot Springs Sub Basin, A because they're not pumping, or B because it isn't a major.
He's, and then it said because it was, it was not a
But.
a medium, it was a low priority.
We're not anticipating the subsidence that you're going to get down, where if you read into the report too, you'll see that where the eastern part of the, the bay, or the valley, you'll see you have more of the silts and the settlements, which is more prone to that.
Yes.
That. Settlement.
But some of it might be prone to liquefaction, though, too. I would think so.
Well, that's, they're more subject to the subsidence than, than we will be up here where we have the more rocky area.
Okay, thank you. And, no, questions? Okay. And Director Duncan, did I ask you? You have any questions?
No.
Before you took your drink. Director Grasha, do you have any question?
No, I've made comments on this subject many times in the past, and I'm glad that the three agencies are finally coming together on this, and we'll get some actual science to back up the casual statements that the Board Chair has made over the past years.
About past, about, about past studies. Okay, so item number six, number 12, we'll go to.
That will be Monday. Is that correct? Dory?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Wallam, yes, Ashley Metzger from DWA will be here on Monday.
Okay, the groundwater state really plan update.
That will be by Mr. Steve Ledbetter also, and he's still on the screen.
Hello, again.
Hey, give me a second to share my screen. I hope my connectivity issues are solved for the time being. I wanted to come back this month. We're getting closer to bringing the Mission Creek Plan back for adoption next month, and the Sangre Gonia Pass Plan back for adoption in January. So I wanted to do a recap of where, you know, what, again, what Sigma is, Mission Springs role, the status of the plans, and then what we're going to be bringing back to you in the next two months for consideration. So you should.
No, 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 we didn't. There he is. Okay, we can see your PowerPoint.
Okay. I'm gonna stop my video just to avoid any connectivity issues. So for a quick background, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act was signed into law into 2014, and it provides the framework for municipalities throughout the state of California to achieve sustainable groundwater management over the next 20 years. That's done through the formation of groundwater sustainability agencies by, by local government. So you would maintain control of your groundwater management activities so long as you meet compliance by 2040. Standby. Okay. What DDR did back when they passed Sigma is they went in and did an evaluation of all groundwater basins throughout California and applied a rating of them if they're in critical overdraft or a critical priority, a high priority, medium, or low priority. Anything that was deemed a medium priority or higher was required to meet the requirements of Sigma as well as prepare a groundwater sustainability plan or have an alternative plan in place. Once the plan has been approved by DDR, we are required to do annual reports on how we're achieving groundwater sustainability and prepare comprehensive five-year updates to the underlying plan that's guiding our sustainable groundwater management actions. So for a recap on the Mission Creek Sub Basin, it was deemed a medium priority basin, and we had submitted at the time the 2013 Mission Creek Garnet Hill Groundwater Management Plan and a 2016 Bridge Document to DDR to be considered an alternative plan or alternative to a groundwater sustainability plan. DDR approved that as an alternative plan, and over the last two years, we've been working on the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan Update. In 2020, the GSA has received a $500,000 grant from DDR towards the completion of the plan. The remaining cost of the plan would be split three ways equally between the three agencies, that being Mission Springs, Desert Water, and Coachella. And the Sangre Gonia Pass Sub Basin, that was also deemed a medium priority basin by DDR, but there was no existing groundwater management plan for that area. So what the agencies are preparing is a new 2021 Sangre Gonia Pass Groundwater Sustainability Plan. In 2019, since this was a new area, the agencies actually received, Sangre Gonia Pass received $2 million planning grant to, with 1 million of that being towards the Groundwater Sustainability Plan and 1 million towards the installation of three monitoring wells to help close data gaps for groundwater monitoring. And in the Indio Sub Basin, that was also deemed a medium priority basin, and similar to what happened in Mission Creek, they submitted, the GSA submitted the 2010 Coachella Valley Water Management Plan and a 2016 Bridge Document that was ultimately approved by DDR as an alternative plan. The Indio Sub Basin Water Management Plan Update is on a similar path as the other two plans, and they also received a $500,000 planning grant in 2020 towards the cost of completing the plan. Mission Springs roll on the three plans for the Mission Creek Sub Basin were a member of the Management Committee, and that's a result of the 2004 settlement agreement with CVWD and DWA. And because of that, we are considered an equal in the preparation of that plan and plan update. And the Sangre Gonia Pass, we actually passed resolutions to form our own GSA for that area back in 2019. And in the Indio Sub Basin, we are a stakeholder in that process. Now, a quick recap on the three different kind of plan areas and how those relate to Mission Springs Service Area. The Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan covers the, is shown out here outlined in green, and the heavy black dotted line, it covers the Desert Hot Springs Sub Basin, the Mission Creek Sub Basin, and the Garnet Hill Sub Area. And you see Mission Springs service areas in the cross hatch kind of underline in there. So for the most part, the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan covers a vast majority of the district service area. So the management actions that come out of that will have the biggest impact, and Mission Springs will have the biggest involvement in its groundwater management future as part of the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan. For the Sangre Gonia Pass Groundwater Sustainability Plan, it's, covers the Sangre Gonia it's covers the San Gregorio Pass Sub Basin kind of shown in this heavy dashed line with an orange background. And it really just clips the the far west portion of Mission Springs Service Area kind of showing toward the right of your screen in this horizontal hatch pattern. But really, Mission Springs is a GSA just for this Verbena GSA area, which is just a one square mile area. And that area generally is is generally known as the Palm Springs Crest area. There's additional about three square miles that extend into Mission Springs area. However, DWA is the GSA for that portion. Now for the Indio Water Management Plan Update, as you can see, it covers the entirety of the Indio Sub Basin extending from near us with the Garnet Hill Sub Area and Mission Springs Service Area being up here in the Northwest, extending all the way Southeast to the Salt and Sea. Now, the status of the plans, plan development for all three plans began in late 2019, and we've gone through the process to develop management areas, develop a groundwater model and calibrate the model, establish sustainable management criteria. So how much pumping are we going to allow to make sure that this basin stays sustainable? What kind of projects and management actions will we will we be developing to ensure that we have sustainable management in light of additional pumping in the future due to growth? And that was all part of the model forecasting, planning scenarios and developing project and management actions. All that's been completed. We've gone through an administrative draft comment portion. And right now, we've all three plans have either are either circulating the public draft for public comments or have already completed that process. Meaning that the Indio Plan has already gone through the public comment period and that closed, I believe, last week or the end of October. The Mission Creek Sub Basin, the public comment period is open until the end of next week. And the San Gregorio Pass Plan, the public comment period is open until the end of this month. From there, each of the plans will go through and address public comments, provide a response, possibly make tweaks to the plan depending on what the public comments entail and their validity to warrant any changes to the plan. And then it will move into the adoption stage.
I have a question.
Yes, Director Gasha.
Um, recently, there was a published report about a study that was conducted that indicated that 90% of the overall fault movement along the San Andreas was on the Mission Creek strand, which is what separates the Desert Hot Springs aquifer from the Mission Creek aquifer. And I'm concerned it led me to worry, I guess I should say, that perhaps that could be an issue with the arising total dissolved solids in our water that we're delivering. And I wondered if this plan that you're working on now goes into that as 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 part of its study or 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 does it? Or does it not? And if it didn't, can it? Can we run and quick get that report and find out, you know, if we can add it into the pool of questions that people are considering?
A great question, Director Gasha. So the plan didn't look at potential faulting activity and how that may influence additional water coming from Desert Hot Springs into Mission Creek or from Mission Creek over into Garnet and Indio Sub Basins. But it did look at groundwater management activities. So how much water is being pumped? How much water is either being artificially or naturally recharged in each of the sub basins? And what that what effect that has on water movement between Desert Hot Springs, Mission Creek, and Garnet Hill Sub Basins? So to your, I'm hoping that that captured enough of your question that we did look specifically at inducing additional flows from Desert Hot Springs by pumping activities in Mission Creek. And what was found is that the management activities thus far have not induced additional inflows from Desert Hot Springs into Mission Creek. And the I, when we set up project and management actions and we set up sustainable management criteria, our goal is to maintain the water levels that we currently have, meaning that we're not expecting to increase or induce any additional inflows from Desert Hot Springs to Mission Creek in the future because we'd be maintaining a similar groundwater level throughout the sub basin.
Right, and that's because our GSA has been importing water at the I know there was at one point where our board president went down there and scolded them for bringing so much water into the valley and I I just want to make sure that we're we're not making those kinds of mistakes.
Excuse me? I did not. I don't know what you're talking about. Go ahead. Stop bringing me into your conversation.
Well, you know, you there's news reports that say exactly that. So it's worrisome. I don't know what all you've had your finger in. And now we've got faults moving and water solid numbers are skyrocketing and I'm being told I'm out of line, so.
You are out of order. And if you have any evidence, please bring it forward.
To who?
Okay.
You?
Me. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anybody? Director, Director Sewell, questions?
Are you denying that?
Go ahead, Steve. Okay.
I would just like to clarify to Director Gasha's question. It's not just the importation and artificial recharge of artificial water into Mission Creek. It's been the district's actions and the conservation efforts that the district has taken on. That's had a very, very big impact into our water management act or the overall groundwater management as bringing in imported water. It is a multi-pronged approach. You do need both, but I also want to make sure that the district understands that it's their efforts also in water conservation that have really helped lead to a sustainable basin thus far. So in in closing, you know, what what we're going to be coming to you for is is our board action slide here. And the Mission Creek Sub Basin Alternative Plan, we are, as a member of the management committee, Mission Springs will be required to adopt the plan. In order to meet the deadline to submit the plan by January 1st to DDR, we'll be bringing the final plan to the district at next month's board meeting on December 20th. We'll be prepared at the study session to go into as much or as little detail as the board desires regarding the plan, but we will be asking for board action at that December 20th meeting for the Mission Creek Sub Basin Plan. The groundwater or excuse me, the San Gregorio Pass GSP. Again, as a GSA, we will be required to adopt that plan as well. And for that plan to meet the deadlines with DDR, it looks like the January 13th study session, we would be asking the board to take action at that meeting or perhaps host a a separate or earlier meeting in January to adopt that plan so that we can meet the seminal requirements to DDR. Finally, for the India Sub Basin, we are not a GSA in that basin. So we are not required to do anything with that plan. But the GSAs will be required to adopt that plan and submit it to DDR by January 1st, just like Mission Creek. And that's that's all I had for today. I'm happy to answer questions.
I I just might want to add while you're thinking about your questions too, is that I I think you probably have the picture here. We have really had no control over the timing on this. I mean, this is basically technicians, engineers, modelers, geologists that are putting together a plan that we that we're hopeful the state will approve. If we don't, if they don't approve this plan, then we'll be basically considered in non-compliance. That would trigger, of course, the GSA issues and and authority. So we we we're somewhat subject to what the scientists are saying that we need to do in order to maintain that that management level. Okay? And and but we do need to get this failure to get this adopted on time will put us into non-compliance.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Are you done?
Yes, I'm done. I'm just happy to answer questions if there are any, Madam President.
Okay, Vice President Martin, any questions?
No questions.
Uh, Director Duncan?
No, thank you. That was very thorough.
Director Sewell? Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Steve. Good, good presentation. Number 14, MSWD Regional Water Reclamation Facility Update.
Steve is also on the camera.
Smile on his face. Okay.
I will keep I'll keep today's update short. We're still working with the state to finalize the amount of grant funding from the infrastructure appropriations that will be coming towards the project. As the the general manager and assistant general manager noted, right now, we're already slated to get about 16 million from the Small Community Wastewater and Groundwater Grant Programs towards the project. And what they're evaluating right now is how much additional funding from the Infrastructure Appropriations Bill that was passed in August, excuse me, to how much additional grant funding they'll be applying towards the project. We worked with their staff to put together a text memo that showed the extent of our the district's groundwater quality protection program, how much flows the district will be receiving from current and future septic to sewer conversions and how those would be applied towards the capacity planned at the treatment plant. And at the end of the day, we're justifying that the plant capacity is truly driven by the septic to sewer conversion program. And right now, the state's had that for two weeks, but I just had a call with them at 1 o'clock this afternoon. And the Assistant Deputy Director is still reviewing that information and to finalize that that amount of funding coming towards the project. So I have, again, I have a weekly check in with the state, so we're we're still working towards that process. But again, as noted earlier, the state has given us a construction eligibility date of October 1st, 2021. So any dollars spent towards the construction of the regional plant, the conveyance line and the collection system, M2 collection system are eligible for reimbursement. So we're still ironing out the details, but we're on the right path and we've been given comfort from the state that we are reimbursable for any costs incurred.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Director Duncan?
Still no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number 15, Critical Service Center and Administration Building Update. I would guess that would go to Brian?
Yes, Brian, we'll do it even though he wasn't with us yesterday. We did provide him with some pictures. Correct. Great. Thank you, Madam President, General Manager. Yes, yesterday, several staff and board members attended a tour of the East Valley Water District Administrative Building. It went very well. Those pictures will be uploaded to everyone's OneDrive. So so those of you that did not or not able to attend can see the pictures. Also, it probably won't be our last tour of East Valley. There'll be other opportunities as we go through the design process. The next part of the process will be asking for the board additional input other than what you gave yesterday. If you've had things to think about and want to share some things with our architect, we're more than willing to hear those. I know that there was a questionnaire that was sent out earlier. If there's any changes to that questionnaire, there was an opportunity to maybe change some of your answers.
It wasn't it wasn't even brought up yesterday.
Okay.
True. I mean, he might have, yeah, I I didn't notice it at all.
Okay, well, there's I'm sure there's some other board input that we've asked. That was the reason why we went on that tour was to get your ideas based on what other water districts have done. So that will be the net the next step. And then, of course, showing versions or revisions of anything that we've seen to date. Today, we've only seen a couple of different versions of the site. They've been working with the city to make sure they have the parking in the right spot and things of that nature. But yes, at that point, we'll be starting to share what the vision is of, if you will, of our new building.
Yeah, I think the Danny was sharing, and I think Arturo were sharing stuff with the architects yesterday, too.
Yeah.
As as it came up.
You know, and I want to thank our architect Moon Clark to because this and the nice thing about it was that they have, they're slightly larger than we are. So it was nice to see this facility that would be very typical of what we would want. And the other thing I liked about it was that this wasn't over the chart. They used, you know, the the a very conservative approach to it. You know, there was a lot of exposed and the tile was there.
Style.
And it was in the style and in the metal roof and, you know, it wasn't your very expensive program, yet it looked so professional and so nice. And it was it was so organized. And the one thing that was part of the discussion with especially John Muir was the fact that the community really embraced it because they also serve, I think he said 60% disadvantaged.
Yeah, something like that was 60%.
And 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 they're they're constantly looking at, you know, that group and and how it would be perceived. And they said that that group just embraced it. And and the nice thing about it is that the fact that they didn't go overboard, but yet put a building in there that was so professional and something the community to use. And they did open it up to the community. So it was a it it was a good visit from many respects. So I won't. And with that, all that.
Okay, Vice President Martin would like to make.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the facility as well. And as you mentioned, it it was open to the community, but it was beyond that. They they opened it up for special events being held at the district facility. And it that's what makes it kind of a hallmark of of public facilities in that area because it it's a it's quite a remarkable, quite a remarkable project that they have out there. So.
Yeah, it sounded a little bit like DHS didn't have a whole lot of places for the community to gather and whatnot. And so they were hoping to help out on that note. And it's kind of the same thing we got going here. Director Sewell?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everybody that helped organize that. And, you know, it's one thing to see renderings or schematics of what a building could be, but to get inside there and speak with their staff and see how it's made them more efficient and just improve morale. This building, I mean, it has its issues, but just besides the roof issues and the plastic on the walls, I believe we're really close on outgrowing it. And I'm excited to see somewhere we can grow into and that can, you know, serve our district for years and years to come. So.
We have 67 employees. It's not that much larger than we are. They have they have.
They do serve 100,000.
10,000 accounts.
Yeah, 100,000 customers about. And that they grew in the last seven years, basically.
Right. They just they just built a $220 million wastewater and water reclamation facility. And I don't know, I think John has mentioned a little bit of that. I mean, you haven't, you didn't know anything about it? But, you know, they they it but what was nice is to see that an organization that isn't that much larger, but it's someplace we will be before long. But it it was to to look at the room and how it was organized and how efficient it was to have that
Everybody in the same building.
Did not just go buy a building like we did and try to make it fit, which before this, they were renting places from the mall.
This building was built for the water district. Sorry.
And yeah, it's got about three additions to it, too.
That's true.
But they were renting space from the mall in different areas.
Yeah, so we kept saying a suite in the mall. I don't know.
You know, they they really did need this facility and and and, you know, it's it was kind of fun just to just to see how nice it's going to be someday.
It was. It was a good trip. So sorry, Randy, you couldn't make it or Steve, but it's a good trip.
I'm glad you liked it. I I, you know, I I sent that email over a year ago to Arden as a suggestion that that might be a facility that we would emulate. And I'm glad that you guys showing some excitement for it. Also, I wondered if their facility is surrounded by marijuana grow facilities like ours is going to be something that you might want to consider while you're advocating for building the most expensive building ever to be built in Desert Hot Springs. And you're going to build it in a place that no one wants to be with that. I turn it back to you, Madam President.
Okay, item number six. 10, excuse me, 16. Which is the Aqua President, Vice President, that will be handled at the conference in I guess it's December or maybe it was November 30th or December 1st, one of the two days at the Aqua Conference. That's will be voted on. This is the slate of officers, I guess, and I believe there might be some people throwing their hat in the ring besides the slate. But I would recommend the slate, the the people, they the nominating committee has interviewed them all. They feel that and and it would be the first female vice president, vice president of Aqua. They're both females that were chosen by the the nominating committee, so.
That will be an action item on Monday.
I don't think we ever vote on that.
Okay.
Well, there is an interesting side note on this, you know, Coachella Valley Water District is sending a Well, there is an interesting side note on this, you know, Coachella Valley Water District is sending someone to vote to not support, actually, the slate of candidates that you voted for, and I'm concerned that maybe by your voting against what Coachella Valley's advocating, that maybe you might want to take a look at that and ask yourself if that's really a, a, a direction you want to continue in light of our desire to get along with our neighbors, maybe you could take a look at that and see if it might help relations between the three districts, if for once you might pay attention to something that they may have a different opinion on.
And the, the nominating committee slate, I believe that Patrick O'Dowd might, might have been put onto the, how they didn't pick him, but, but Patrick will still be on the Aqua, the Aqua Board, he will still have a position on the Aqua Board, because he'd be Vice President of, of Region Nine, so he will still be up there in Sacramento and being able to, you know, say his comments and what, and be part of the Aqua Board. So anyway, I, I recommend doing the slate, but we'll talk about that on Monday, and if you guys want to vote on it, that's fine with me. Okay, so number seventeen, holiday, district holiday schedule. Director, General Manager?
Okay, well, we just want you to consider the possibility this year of basically where we want to go is maybe closing the office between Christmas and New Year's, and here's the reason why. First of all, we've just come out of the pandemic. You know, we've got staff that, that has brought us through it in, in a terrific manner. We, we, we've really never slipped, we've always maintained our essential service. The reason I'm bringing it up this year is that Christmas occurs on Saturday, and New Year's occurs on Saturday the following week. By, we, we usually have half the staff off on Fridays, so if we insist, or if we require that the staff move that, their, their half-day or, or their day off to the follow, to the, the, the following Monday, or the following Monday, and then the previous Thursday, which they have the option to do, but we'll make it mandatory. That means we could basically accomplish this with just the, the three days. Many times you'll give them two days off during that before or after Christmas. So we wanted you to consider that, we're fine if you don't want to do it, but, but, but most, we don't get anything done in, in between, we will have staff out there in, in, in the field, if there is a leak, we will have people on call, we will have people, we don't, we don't do anything with turnoffs, of course, we haven't anyway, but we will be able to handle all the business. And I, I wanted to just bring that scenario to you. If there's an, an option to it that you want us to, to look at, we'd be, we'd be open to anything you want, but I thought I would bring that up this year, I thought it might be a good year to say thank you to the staff.
You guys all understand what he's talking about?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of questioning, is this something we normally do vote on, on the schedule? It seemed to me that should be a...
I think the General Managers always comes and asks us and gets our permission to do it, he, it's always, they always do, yeah.
I would think, I would think it would be his decision as.
Well, I think because of the fact that we're giving them some extra days and.
Yeah, okay.
So I think that's the.
Again, okay.
That's the, that's the crux of it.
But think about it, whatever options you want to do, we'll, we'll be happy.
Did you, the one that you put forward, maybe you ought to have a little diagram or something of that? On Monday, on Monday, something, what you got, you showed me, something together like that, makes it a little easier to understand.
Great.
Okay.
Are you saying that the days fall uneven week? I, I, I've never in my life understood this, so between Chris, you want to give them a week between Christmas and New Year's? Does it? I, I, and I am fully in support of that, but I, I never quite get why one year it's different than another year, is it because the Christmas is not always on Sunday, or? Maybe, maybe it's asking too much for you to straighten out my flawed thinking.
No, it's just that Christmas and New Year's, of course, always occurs on.
He brings up the diagram on Monday, you'll, it, it'll all fall into place, you'll understand.
In this case, if we have them moved, we can, we can basically get by without.
It's not the whole week, but.
Providing the whole week off.
Yeah, no, they are getting paid for the.
They still have an entire week off.
Yeah, an extra pay for the whole week, they're, they've got, there's some holidays mixed in.
We only need to give them.
And some Fridays, off days Friday, so, well, when he, when he brings it on Monday, well, it'll explain itself a little better.
It is confusing.
Yeah, unless you actually look at the week and show me what, yeah, yeah, because there's Fridays involved, and then there's Tuesdays and Mondays and.
Brian and, and I will bring something to you.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so the consent agenda has the approval of the minutes and the register of demands, any questions on any of those? No? 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 Okay, and Steve, please raise your hand if you want to make a comment, and don't just blurt it out, because I like, ah, who's that? So just kind of raise your hand, and I can see you, thank you. Okay, Directors' Reports?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, please.
You, Monday, too, okay.
October eighth, I attended the Palm Springs Unified School District, State of the District, it was on Zoom. Not too much to report, most of the presentation was regarding their different COVID policies, and congratulations to their new Superintendent Mike Sweets. One thing they did note was that a lot of their extracurricular trips are on hold still, so most of our kids that are going to, that would normally be going up to Mission Creek will probably not be going this year. October twenty-first, attended Desert Hot Springs State of the City, Mayor Mattis shared lots of great news. Lots of new businesses, revenues were up, their general fund was up from what they had expected with their budget, lots of new housing developments are moving forward, and major crimes are continuing to decrease. It was hosted by the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, and they also recognized different businesses and People of the Year. But one thing we all noticed at our table was they had Crystal Geyser Water on the table. So I actually did speak to one of the representatives and mentioned that the district could provide water to any of their future events within our district, so be better to have our bottle on the table.
It would be cheaper, too, because I'm sure they paid for it.
And then October twenty-second, Groundwater Committee meeting with Desert Hot Springs Library. I thought it was a great meeting with their Branch Manager Veronica Boswell. It was pretty much just a brainstorming meeting, we kind of threw a whole bunch of different ideas and programs at them, and for the most part, they seemed open to just about everything. I think right now Marion is working on narrowing down which are going to be most feasible, trying to finalize different programs, but a, a wide range from adults to young children, to maybe even a high school or middle school workshop series. So I think it'll be a great relationship with the library, and be good for our community and our youth to know the importance of our water.
Yeah, it was, it was great, it was a great meeting, and so I think Marion might be talking about it eventually, if not today. So I'm, I'll just say that my report, I'm going to tag on to Ivan, and said, "Good report, Arvin," for them for that day, because I was at that meeting also, so that'll be our report. Okay, Randy, or Director Duncan? Did you go to any of this stuff? Yeah, you want to do, oh, you already said Monday, right?
Yeah, Monday, please.
Okay, Director Grascha, do you have any to report, anything?
None that directly affect the district, although I did attend several meetings of various boards around the district.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, General Managers' Report.
Ah, great. All right, you know, and I will just, I just have a couple of things I want to say before we go with the financial report and public outreach report. We will begin soon to start moving people around. And so you'll see different people in different places. We did get some of the furniture last week, and so it looks pretty nice, and engineering will be moved, and finance will be moved into engineering, and it's just temporary, but we are we need to get that thing done. I did notice that our water production was down in light of the drought, is down by twelve percent, and it has been down for three months. And yet, we've had, added ninety-three new services in the first four months of this, of this year, it's interesting.
Wow, really?
You know, and, and the other thing I wanted to add that I didn't, that I wasn't able to, to circle back with Laura on, who said, I, I, she didn't have anything in here, I know you've all been hearing about the infrastructure bill that was passing, and it was nothing really in the carpet clay that was news, of course, it all happened after.
Well, it's got to go to the Senate, too.
Right.
Not a done deal yet, right?
Anyway.
I thought, I thought it passed.
I thought it all passed.
Passed the House? Okay, I mean, I missed, it went to the Senate, okay, I missed it, I thought they went to the Senate for approval now.
But it, it nevertheless does have bipartisan support, so I'm assuming that it will, and how that translates, I was assuming that you might ask me, how does that translate into any effort or any, any projects we might have, and I, I think it's too early to tell right now, okay? With that said, Arturo, did you want to do the financial report?
I assume that's a yes.
Yeah, yes.
Looks like a financial report to me.
Arturo, are you muted? We can't hear you if you're speaking.
I was trying to unmute myself, and it went directly into the presentation. Real quick, there's really not much to discuss with the financials, the district is doing very well considering the pandemic, and if you see, we're still in the black of two-point-five million dollars through October thirty-first, our cash is over from last year, a little over, a little under four million dollars. The investment accounts are still very, very similar to last year in thirty-one million dollars. And it's just a sign of the market and how everything's going pretty slow right now in terms of the investments. Our customers are responding and making their payments. We have submitted the final information to the state to receive the COVID grants that's available, and at this point, they have decided to go ahead and cover pretty much a hundred percent of what we submitted, a little under two-point-five million dollars, and so it's looking promising that the district will be made whole for any customers that have not paid. And so in terms of the financials, that's all I have to report for October, it's looking great. Another note, we're in the process of finishing the audit right now. Director Grascha, I do apologize, I'm not sure what happened with the mail, we did send out that letter, I personally placed it in your inbox the week, the first week of July, and I'm not sure why you received that a little later, but that has been submitted. I did call the auditors to verify that they received your calls to make sure that they answer your questions as they come up. So please, if they have not reached out to you, please give them a call back again, otherwise, they should have already contacted you. Otherwise, the audit is looking good, and we will have a presentation here in the next month. So once it's finalized, and that's all I have for the financials.
Thank you.
No, no comments.
Nobody's raising their hands, okay, so we'll move on, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next will be Marion in the Public Outreach, we have a lot of exciting things to tell you. So with that, you have the floor, Marion.
Thank you, General Manager. And good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, I have a short PowerPoint that I would like to share with you today that'll highlight some of our public affairs efforts during the past month. Bear with me one moment.
Additional information. Pretty, isn't it? It looks like, right?
The wall, we just saw it through.
Oh, the wall, okay.
Additional information is also available in the General Manager packet. As I'm sure most of you are aware, Governor Newsom issued a statewide drought emergency proclamation last month, expanding his existing proclamation to add eight additional counties, including Riverside, to his proclamation, his drought proclamation, which encourages residents to voluntarily reduce water use by fifteen percent. It also allows the governor's office to help fund additional drought response and water delivery programs. Our district is stepping up with our conservation messaging in both our paid and our unpaid media. We're also leveraging our membership in the CD Water Counts, the nonprofit group that was formed by the six water agencies here in the Coachella Valley to help disseminate the conservation message across our valley. As you may recall, last month, I also shared with you about our plans to launch the calendar drawing contest. Entries have started to come in, but progress has been slow. We've increased our promotion of the contests, including adding more paid and unpaid social media posts, and by making direct contact with our community partners, including the Palm Springs Unified School District, the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Center, and the DHS Library, all of which have expressed interest in helping us promote the contest with their students. The deadline for submission is November fifteenth, and entry forms and additional information is available on our website at mswd.org/drawingcontest. Also, for anyone who has not yet had a chance to see it, our new billboard featuring the regional water reclamation facility is now up and running. Prominently located just south of Dillon on Palm Drive, the new billboard reinforces the district's forward-thinking commitment to groundwater protection. And just as Director Sewell mentioned, we did meet last month with the Desert Hot Springs Library staff to tour the new facility and dispense opportunities to showcase water in the library. We discussed the development of different age-appropriate programming, including a monthly story hour for our little ones, a hands-on, activity-based learning program for teens and tweens, and a series of evening water talks, meetings for adults who are interested in learning more about water-related issues. I've had follow-up conversations with the library staff, and designs for a poster are currently underway. The poster will go near their water refill station and sit on an easel and highlight the value and quality of MSWD's water. I will have additional updates for this board as we continue to work towards implementing some of these, the other ideas that were also discussed. As you may already have read in your email, we are also planning to move forward with the launch of our new website this week. The new user-friendly site has undergone a complete overhaul. Key features of the site include enhanced navigation, improved accessibility, and a new mobile-friendly design. With more than fifty percent of our users accessing our website on a mobile device each month, it's critical that the new site support responsive sizing for tablets and phones. When reworking the site design and layout, we really wanted to make sure we took into consideration the user's experience. So information has been grouped in a way that makes sense to our customers. Aside from the enhanced customer service and about-us areas, the redesigned site features conservation and redate information, a kid's corner, and a special developer section that includes maps, forums, guidelines, and drawings. We're very excited about the launch, and at my request, Story sent the board a link to the new site last week, which you all should have received by now. Included in that email is also my direct contact information as well. And lastly, I'd like to share kind of a fun project. We are developing a series of informational videos that we showcased on our website and shared on social media during the next year. Video topics include a range of water-related interests, including seasonal conservation, groundwater protection, history, pipe protect, and pipe protection, just to name a few. These videos will feature comments from staff and/or one or two members of the board. And today, we have, I'm sorry? Okay, and today, we have three of those videos completed, and we have eleven more planned. My hope is that we can start scheduling directors to come in and shoot multiple subjects all at once, saving both your time and production costs. In the coming week, we will be reaching out directly to each board member to schedule individual video tipping sessions with each of you. I'd now like to take just a few minutes to show you the completed videos that we have, starting with our Understanding Your Bill video.
Every dollar on your water bill ensures we are available to you twenty-four-seven and providing the quality water you deserve. Your bill also includes additional resources to manage your water consumption.
Hi, I'm April Scott, I'm the Customer Service Manager at Mission Springs Water District. Not only does your water bill let you know how much water you use and by billing units, it lets you know by gallons as well. It helps you track and kind of get an idea, since we bill. It helps you track and kind of get an idea, since we bill by 100 cubic feet, which is 748 gallons. Another feature on the bill is the account summary, which will show you how many gallons of water you use per billing unit and also breaks it down, four gallons for one penny.
There is also a chart on your water bill that shows your consumption this year versus last year. This can help you monitor your water consumption during the billing period.
The bill will show you where you can pay your bill and how you can pay your bill, especially during this time where our office has been closed. There are many ways you can pay your bill. You can auto pay, set up auto pay on the website. You can pay online, pay as a guest online. You can pay by phone, by calling us. You can send your bill in by mail in your payment. Or in person, you can pay cash at 7-Eleven locations in Desert Hot Springs. You may also drop your payment off at our night drop box in the front of the building. Or you can call us. Our team is ready and happy to assist you. If you have any questions regarding your bill, the district, or your water, please call us here at the district. We're very happy to help.
Very good.
Next, we have our emergency preparedness.
An emergency can happen at any time.
If there's an interruption of service, we have a system set up.
Floods, earthquakes, fires, whether it's a natural disaster or other unforeseen event.
We will get somebody to respond immediately to that situation.
Mission Springs Water District is dedicated to providing our customers safe and reliable water 24/7.
They're paying for the delivery of that water to their home. It's especially important with the kind of weather that we have in the Coachella Valley that we do a good job of providing that service to our community with very few, if any, interruptions during the course of a year.
If an emergency or a natural disaster occurs, MSWD is ready.
If there's a water interruption, we have crews on standby and we will identify the problem and we'll make the necessary repairs as soon as possible.
While MSWD ensures both water and wastewater utilities are running smoothly, it's important our customers are also prepared. Having an emergency preparedness kit is a great start. Here's what to include. A gallon of water per person to last three days. Non-perishable food, a can opener and utensils, first aid kit and toolkits, a flashlight, and batteries. Everyday essentials such as prescription medications, an extra pair of eyeglasses, clothing, and jackets should also be included. Creating a family disaster plan with evacuation routes and meeting places is also important. You can find free planning sheets and guides on our website, mswd.org. MSWD urges everyone to take emergency preparedness seriously, because it's never too early to be prepared.
And we have one more video, which is the value of water.
Our water has won nine special taste awards in the Berkeley Springs, West Virginia Water Tasting Competition. And we're very proud of that.
Well, water is probably one of the most important things that we have on this planet. And without it, none of life would exist.
We wash ourselves with it, we clean our house with it.
Swimming in the swimming pool.
We drink it.
Going out to dinner, attending any kind of an event.
Water is, is a main source of economic development.
All of that goes away without water. And water is absolutely vital to sustain the quality of life that we have in the Coachella Valley.
It keeps our city running, our families healthy, and our economy growing. And our customers expect water to be ready and available whenever it is needed, around the clock, 365 days a year. At Mission Springs Water District, we make sure it is.
We have all the guys that are out in the field, working every day to keep our system in really good shape, so that we do have sustainable water available for our customers, and they're out there every day.
There's a water interruption, we have crews on standby, and we will identify the problem and we'll make the necessary repairs as soon as possible.
Rain, shine, heat, it doesn't matter.
While the surface of our desert is dry, Mission Springs Water District taps into local supplies underground. Through careful management and responsible use, the groundwater basin offers a sustainable source that costs much less than water imported from hundreds of miles away.
We have to protect the water.
Water is life. It's really important to protect our groundwater, because it's the only supply of drinking water that we have.
Preserving the quality of our water supply allows Mission Springs Water District to continue serving some of the best tasting drinking water in the world.
Without it, we would perhaps not be able to provide water to not only ourselves, but to future generations.
The first three videos that we've completed, the emergency preparedness video and the value of water video have not yet been published. They're still unlisted on our YouTube site, but we will start to push those out in the next couple of weeks. And with that, that's the end of my update. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Couldn't you have done something to make me look younger?
I'll note that for next time.
Okay.
Thank you, Marion.
The problem, Russ, is that they did.
What happened? Who said what?
Randy said they did make me look younger.
Oh, Randy.
I, I do have a question, if it's all right, Madam President. I noticed on our website design, and I brought this up before, that there was, and maybe I missed it, if I did, I apologize. There's no mention of, on the website design regarding our solar plant information. Is that, is that included somewhere in the website? Because we're, we're saving, I don't know what the amount of savings that are passed along to the, to the customer, but we're saving quite a bit of money, power, power costs by having this solar plant. Is that in the website design?
I am not sure that that information got transferred over from the old site, but we can definitely, I can make sure we have a page up before we launch.
Very good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've had a chance to look at it briefly, so, so far, I thought it was very well done. So, but I still have to look at it a lot more, check it out.
And, you know, we're look, we're, you know, and then there are other things coming up, so be prepared. We got our dashboard, you know, our customer portal. I mean, there's all kinds of things happening that I think we're going to be very happy with. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, are you still on your?
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. District Council comments?
Yes, we will have a closed session this afternoon, and it'll be on item number nine, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. And this is the PDEA and Sharon Moreno versus Mission Springs Water District case.
Which is item number 24. On our agenda.
Oh, on mine, it says nine.
The, the, the PDEA, is that what you said? Yeah, that's item number 24, okay. At least on mine.
Yeah, we did, I think that numbering should be 20.
That's the item, the PDEA versus Mission Springs case.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, so. Our director's comments?
Nothing further.
Director Duncan?
Yeah, lost my place with a little, their little mute button. Nancy, I think you and Russ did a great job on those videos in April. Those were all three really nice, very well put together, easy to follow. Yeah, very, very nice, very professional. Today is the Marine Corps birthday. I know we have a couple of other Marines on staff there, so happy birthday to them. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Want to thank all the veterans. I know we have plenty on staff from all branches of the service. Want to thank them for, for what they have done. And any, any of those watching this presentation, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you to you too. You're a veteran. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple. One is, I saw in the General Manager's report that the, the customer portal is getting close to launch, and I didn't know if maybe that's something we could have a workshop for, maybe for the directors, just to get us all up to speed. So when we're out in the community, we can help people, kind of show them what's available to them and how they can manage their water better.
What is the timeframe on that, Marion? Didn't, didn't we touch on that a little bit? Today? I can't remember exactly what we discussed, but.
I think we're looking between 60 to 90 days, if I'm not mistaken. And I also, I've, so I've been saying typically early spring is last I heard.
And so we could somehow work in a, a session with the board to, at least in, maybe it works at a study session or something to kind of help you bring it up in case you.
Between now and spring, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
So put that on the to-do list, would you, Marion, for me?
I'm sure we'll have other topics by then to, to put on a special meeting, so.
And then just kind of echoing Randy's comments, great job on the videos. And also thank you to our veterans. I did want to mention that tomorrow at 9:00 AM at Veterans Park, the City of Desert Hot Springs is having their veteran ceremony, so.
See you there.
Yeah, and I also read today that Cabots, all, all veterans are a bit free into Cabots Museum tomorrow also, yeah, tomorrow, all day tomorrow. I think it was like nine to four or something like that. So that was, that was Cabot's way of saying thank you. Okay, so Director Grasha, sorry.
I just to clarify on the letter that the Finance Director mentioned, that was received, that I marked it with the date, I think I have it around here somewhere. I forwarded that to another agency to add to the pile. It's the second time that that's happened. Those, it's specific, the law is specific. Those are to go directly to the director, not pass through hands in the office and then to the legal counsel to hold for later, to go, to be directly from the auditor to the director. No, nobody gets in the way of that. It took 200 and some odd, more than 200 days to get to me. Last year, it never got to me. I didn't find out about it until during the board meeting, when I, when I was informed that I didn't participate in the questions. So it's really laughable that I have to sit here and explain that to you guys, you know very well what you're doing. You need to knock it off, get clean with the law, do things right, and stop pretending that you're above criticism on this stuff. It's just pathetic. Thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear on that, my office didn't hold it. We didn't receive it and hold it. So if that's the, the innuendo there, it's just completely factually inaccurate. And the staff member indicated that it was mailed out, so.
Yeah, I think it was mailed out.
That is according to the legal requirement.
I got mine, I got mine a long time ago, yeah.
Everybody else got it.
Yeah, it was mailed. Okay, thank you. So. I guess we'll just, we'll go into closed session now, so I'll take about five, five minute break right now. Yeah, and then a break till we get organized into closed session.
Five minute break.
Go ahead, we're out of closed session, Mr. Pickney?
Yes, the board met in closed session, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. That involved one case, case number RIC 2003782, George PDEA and Sharon Moreno versus Mission Springs Water District. No reportable action this time.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you.
Bye, Randy.